2021. Vote call, please. Anderson present.
Who is present?
Marano present. Mostafi present.
Miss that present.
Wilson present.
Brady present for both.
Wilson for region. So we'll start with public comment. We are lucky to have both Zoom capability and in-person capability. Reminder, we'll give speakers three minutes to speak.
Do you want to queue up the Zoom?
Yeah.
And raising function while we take any comments in the room?
Okay, so if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand through the participants, you know, hand raise function, and we will call anyone who ordered. We will first have people in line in room. And I'm just going to note that because our policy of having masks in buildings, we're asking that if you, if you can't wear a mask going forward, and we have comments to make, please opt to use our Zoom feature rather than our live in person feature. So we'll start with the people in the room. Yes, say your name and your address.
You think it'll work there?
It's close enough, right?
Yeah.
Let me just turn that back a little.
It's on the bottom.
On the bottom first.
Okay.
Tracy, give me that one and take this one.
Okay.
There we go.
I'm Monica Granfield, Wenton Carlisle, Times Drive Carlisle, Mass. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak tonight. I'd like to ask about the American Rescue Plan Act, signed into law on March 11th, 2021. For those unfamiliar with this, this law provides $1.9 trillion to assist in recovery from COVID-19, and $122 million, sorry, of this money. Let me just fix this. It's tricky stuff. Billion dollars of this money is allocated to state education agencies and school districts. $18 billion, I can't read these things, allocated for testing. Per the Associated Press, Concord Public Schools will receive a total of $1.44 million, and with about 2,065 students, that's about $701 per student. This money comes with the strings attached. In order to qualify for funding, each school plan needs, needed to include information about the extent to which the school or school system intends to address Centers for Disease Control Guidance in these areas: universal, incorrect wearing a mask, physical distancing, contact tracing, isolate and quarantine, in collaboration with the state, local and health departments, screening and diagnostic testing, efforts to improve vaccination rates with educators, other staff and students. The school system is required to review its plan at least every six months through September 2023. This implies that the federal government and schools intend to be engaged in COVID management for at least another 26 months. The CDC is also mainly privately funded by the pharmaceutical industry, which tells us we need to look at all the science, not just the industry-funded politicized science. Why aren't we questioning any CDC guidelines? My question is, what role did these incentives play in influencing the decision-making? Will they influence us to 2023? How are these funds going to be allocated? Please do not let the federal government's money cloud our better judgment. Thank you.
Might we have a copy of that, just so we have verbatim from you? Is that okay?
Oh. Is this okay? This is my domain.
No, that's, thank, thank you very much.
Very much. Okay. Bob Lannadear.
Yes, thank you. Bob Lannadear, 72 Pfennigan Way. Still hard to hear the meeting room, so just wanted to provide that feedback. Maybe there'll be transcripts of this so that folks can follow along more easily. Yeah, I only have three minutes, so I'll focus my comments on the meeting that happened on the 24th. And so I thought there were a number of good points that were raised in that meeting, and there is a recording available, but I wanted to try to summarize some key points and get it out to the broader school committee so that you can do your important work. And I just want to say also, I really appreciate the effort that you're all putting in, and hope that these are words of encouragement for you. So approximately 5:53 in the recording, Susan Rasmun mentioned that there were, and I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name, 31 COVID cases in the student population, and we'll probably get an update from that today, but that's about 1% to 2% of the total student population. The, a very small percentage, I think, was what Dr. Hunter said at the 33-minute mark. Tricia McGann, oh no, I'm sorry, Susan also mentioned at the nine-minute mark that about 95% of the reported students were vaccinated. Hopefully, we'll get an update on that, but that's a very high vaccination rate. And then also at the 14-minute rate, 14-minute, Mark Susan mentioned that a 3% positivity rate, which I think is based on the total sampling size, is considered the threshold. So I guess my first question is, if we're at 1% to 2% and 3% is the threshold, you know, where, where are we really at the, at the threat level? The other interesting point made by Susan, and it was on the slides at the 15-minute mark, that if the population gets 80% vaccinated, the student population, then there may be an ability to lift the mask mandate, quote, depending how things go. And I would really like to understand from the school board committee what, what that statement implies. Really would like to get a clear understanding of, again, what the criteria are for lifting it or possibly putting in more controls. Dr. Hunter mentioned at 25 minutes that all the teachers are going to get vaccinated by the 17th of October. So I just say personally, I was really hoping that that would be a day-one requirement. I know that there's a lot of constraints you're working on, but if there's unvaccinated adults in the Concord School System, I really see that as, as, you know, an unnecessary risk. I realize it's going to get taken care of. Tricia mentioned at 32 minutes, there's no hospitalization. And then at 43 minutes, there was a very interesting set of statements by Jennifer. I'm sorry, I didn't get her last name, but she's a parent in the community. And I don't believe any of these were contraindicated, that more children are dying from the flu than COVID. You know, I looked that up, and that appears to be accurate. So what we're really dealing with here, as far as I can understand, is a flu-type situation. And I don't recall, you know, putting together a series of tight restrictions based upon flus in the past. Jennifer also mentioned, and I've also looked through this up in my time.
So just a point of reference for anybody in the audience, this is a business meeting, as was the last one, so we would not have had discourse with the party that we spoke of. Because we're
Well, yeah, I, I know, and that's
I'll ask, you be so kind if you bring any additional questions specifically our way, so we can take those under advisement.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I mean, the reason that I'm pointing this out is so that you will go and, and look at the recording and incorporate that. But, you know, I, I think there's a lot of good information. I don't know if I'm at time or not, that's, if I am, that's fine, I'll, I'll be quiet. But I, yeah, I really only have a couple more, more points. I mean, basically, what we're looking at is if there's a positive case, students are going to have to isolate for 10 days, and that's a lot of school to be missed. So I'm just urging the school board to come up with some creative solutions. I think we all agree that kids need to be in school. And I'm really, you know, hopeful that the board is going to come up with a solution that's, that's going to work for everyone, especially the kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Forgive me for interrupting, but I'll continue to do that, just so we honor that timeline. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Terry Adaman.
Hi, I'm Terry Adaman, 89 Heath Bridge Road. I'm chair of select board, and I'm the liaison from the select board to the school committee. And I just want to remind and invite the entire school committee to attend our select board meetings coming up on September 20th. We are going to be having a meeting devoted solely to the middle school. Not the design or anything. It's just going to be a brainstorming session on alternative revenues that we can come up with to offset the cost. Second meeting I want to invite you to is September 27th, a week later. The superintendent and town manager will be jointly proposing their capital plan to the school committee and the select board on that night. And finally, I want to say that whenever the middle school building committee and the school committee are ready, the select board stands ready to put on our agenda to call the special town meeting whenever, you know, just give us a lot of notice as much as you can, and we will put it on our agenda. Thank you.
If there are any more comments, then we'll move on to chair the liaison reports. And before we do, I just want to take a minute to say thank you to everybody in the school community for a smooth back to school. I mean, it's fantastic to see kids out on their playing fields and everybody getting to their work and just it's, you hear, and thank you to the community for for just these constructive past two, I mean, really, the past year and a half, but, but especially, you know, patient's cooperation and and, well, absolutely. It's, it's great. It's really been nice. And, and part of that beginning was a wonderful presentation with a guest speaker to the faculty and staff opening meeting with Grace Lynn, who is just, she's a superstar. And she shared an extended version of a TED Talk, a TEDx Talk that she's done. And I highly recommend that people seek out her, the TEDx Talk, or if there's any kind of extended version of it that you can find. It was just, it was a very coherent and insightful explanation and discussion about DEI and, and really about finding your own, your own personal growth and your path to your own personal growth and how important that is. And so, thank you for, for inviting her and sharing. I don't have any other reports.
So I'd like to extend your thanks beyond that to the citizens who joined our meeting. And thank you for being here tonight. I can report on behalf of the middle school building committee and report that there is a meeting this Thursday morning, 7:30. We are getting to delve more deeply into some of the finishing conversations, but we still have other fundamental parts of our building plan still in discussion. The design subcommittee met this morning, and we came out in favor of one of the exterior designs of four that were presented to us. Details to follow. Because we make no decisions as a subcommittee, only the full committee does that. And we know that we have been able to maintain a 25% wall-to-window ratio with some fine-tuning of north and south-facing windows. We've chosen a simplified window design from several that came on our way. You'll see all those graphics in the meeting minutes from this morning. They'll soon be posted, or in the full committee this Thursday morning. And finally, it was the opinion of the subcommittee this morning that alternative solutions to an auditorium in the form of possible hybrid split auditoriums with folding seats and possible partitions were examined, I think, with, with good care. And the consensus was that the traditional 420-seat single auditorium would serve the needs of the school and the community best. So I think those are, is that comport with your?
Yeah, that's it, Sarah.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I think there's a lot going on with the building. Maybe that probably we should have a discussion about it in our 14th meeting. Speaking also, just to take care of the item that the select board is specifically asking about, is that cost savings, responded to, thank you very much. And for those of our audience that are interested in this, do we have a public forum scheduled? Yet, we do not. Okay, that's fine. And I think that's it for the building projects. Just in there.
We did have a seminar this morning, if you're pointing, if I may, that, from a community member and a FinCom observer, that at a community forum, we would be well to revisit the, what's called the community-facing benefits of the middle school. So this is, uh, included on the document.
Okay, very good. Update from Concord Carlisle Adults and Community Education. The committee will continue meeting on Zoom at 11:00. Next meeting, September 17th, if anyone is interested. They have some exciting programs that are, that are already coming out in the fall. One of them, Can We Talk Program. Another exciting events, they're coming from the Robbins House, Concord African-American History. There are some interesting events, example, rekindling with our racial past, white Concord letters from early civil rights activists. So some interesting programs are coming, coming out as well.
We have the brochure in the mail. I encourage that everybody, I hope everybody gets it. Concord and South, and
And drivers up, is it full?
Swing. Good.
Any other reports?
No, no, okay.
Okay, correspondence on this.
I'm going to actually loop you back to the minutes in Oh, yes, I do. I was, I was Uh, there's no, that's Okay, all right.
And we have a motion, please, to accept the minutes. Oh no, that's just
But they're only microscope minutes, I'm sorry. So can I have a motion to accept the minutes of July 7th, July 12th, and July 15th, 2021?
Show mood.
A second?
Okay. Discussion.
These are the open session.
Correct. Thank you. Any discussion? Vote call, please.
Who's I?
Marano I.
Miss that I.
Mostafi.
Brady I. All right. Can I entertain a motion for the executive session minutes from July 7th, July 12th, and July 15th? Are these Congress Committee open?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, just starting. Thank you very much.
Uh, show mood.
A second.
Second. Okay. Any discussions, I don't know if there is? And I'll take a vote call, please. If I, who's I?
Marano I.
Miss that I.
Brady I. All right, so that takes care of our minutes, everybody. Dr. Hunter, you can figure out who, who can make our answers.
Um, so on the correspondence, on the regional side, I had seven, seven correspondence, all about school, digital vehicles.
I'd say we probably have more than that, but it's hard to tell sometimes. I think people just submit to Congress. Probably 12 to 15.
Who has other ones, other questions leading up to the rightful agenda? So thank you, everyone, for, for reaching out to us. We appreciate all the feedback and correspondence and stories. Okay. Discussion, back to school.
Date. Yeah, well, thank you. So sort of taking Sarah's lead and just extend that. Teachers returned last Thursday. You know, I, I have to admit, I was a little shoot-ridden, but we went virtual for the large staff gathering, what normally happens with K-12 all in the same room. And that's the second year in a row being virtual. But I honestly don't think we promised anything, much to the credit of Grace Lynn and the way in which she brought this, and looking at this, she's responsible for bringing grace to us. So it was a morning of welcome backs, and I think a lot of positive sentiments expressed by some of Sarah on your behalf, the union presidents, and then really the rest was all Grace. And really, what a storyteller communicating with us her personal journey, both professionally and in terms of self-identity as race and how it's intertwined and ultimately became the same. While she had this drawing in between chapters, I'll call them chapters of the story, and the part we benefited from, that isn't on the TED Talk, is had her illustrations from a number of her books as she told, told the tale, which really, this was really, really rich. And something really interesting happened. I, we had some of it in, a person did too. So many teachers that it felt like she was speaking just to them. I don't know who would have known that in person. It's so interesting how the technology, it felt really intimate. I totally agree. So it was a great kickoff. Teachers went as faculties back in school over the course of Thursday and Friday, because I didn't get to see the other person, I asked the principals to stagger the staff meeting, so the five of us appear on the staff meeting, a staff meeting over the course of the two days, which is our cheaper. And it's something we should continue to do, because it was a great day for us to see them on a smaller set, because they haven't been in person, it's so big, we can't really next, so. It was a great couple of things. Teachers got all ready, ready to roll and all set up for the kids. And I can't believe it's only been two days, but everything, the kids brought came in yesterday. We have actually not been really, not really during the nap, because even transportation, not major, major pickups, which is always a challenge. This year, maybe a little more so, as we bring all the kids back, all of us. Overall, things have gone really, really well. I've been out in schools as, as have some of them. And the energy is really, really positive. The kids are excited to be here. Things that came back, despite the COVID, we're still bringing things back that we didn't have last year. A certain high rate for shows, the elementary specialists, being live and in person. Everywhere but the road, you get to leave, get out and leave the room and go to music, go to gym, throw together, which, you know, the way of, of care that we're doing there. But just who knows, middle school is coming, high school's coming. We jumped in here first, felt physically, we're just off and rolling. A lot of great conversations with teachers and kids about middle school especially, I noticed, and I'm sure they're all doing it, but we haven't catched them doing it. Just a lot of messages of, you know, we're all here to take risks and try things, and it's, you're going to make mistakes, and the journey is to struggle together, and that's how you're actually going to learn, and really, really good foundations being set. A lot of get-to-know-you activities, a lot of, you know, learn rates and things like that. A lot of community building, just So it's been a great, great start. Like I said, two days, but feels like we're back in the, back where we, one of the teachers said to me, it feels like we picked up wherever we left off. And in many ways, that's, that's true. I think the biggest of all of our best to organize as we go forward with the new year, but it's been a really great start. So thank you for all the work you did to help us line up what our protocols were going to be and get those executed. Continue to bring you good news.
Dr. Hunter, can I ask about personnel?
Yes.
Not that I have any, uh, agenda or, or any here, but rather, I know August is always a busy month, but I know other districts are undergoing some little challenges. Are you comfortable about where we stand right now?
Overall, yes. I would say any professional positions we got, teaching positions, even a couple of very late resignations. We've been able to get a pool and attract really high-quality people. Probably popping in another district and creating another issue over there, but we just, I forget names. The place we're still sort of working at is support staff. We did, I have, you know, we're going to potentially add some supervisors back, because lunch is now outside, and it's not what it was last year, but we still would like the extra hands. We've had mixed results with that. We've had need for a couple of monitors with some special education students, and a little bit of a struggle there. But that's the only spot, and I think it's working itself out as the week goes on. It's, it's a real, I'm probably a month, it's custodial. We're actually struggling more than anywhere else, I would say. Thankfully, our best drivers were, overall, particularly in one transition. Most of them have returned, as you're seeing the headlines there, so we're so grateful about the commitment of our drivers and all the, you know, efforts we made to give them great working conditions, so they continue to stick with us and are, as enjoyed by our families as always. Thanks for asking. It's definitely challenging times in certain areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Hold it up, please. Yeah, so I, we already, we'd want to give you highlights of where we were on day two, so I'll show my hands, day two. However, we did get a firsthand, you know, you got the COVID, it's, it's staff that returned, the kids were about to. So we've had two adult cases, breaks through cases of vaccinated people, and that's probably worth, we will track that. And, and three students who had not been to school yet, but we decided to start tracking it if they miss any school because of it, so it'll be that little blip here at the beginning. So we'll not come over, but that's where we are right now. I wanted to bring you vaccine information that we had discussed collecting, so I'm going to stay sure to think that would be easier. So we, and I'll preface the staff data by saying this is a little bit soft, because we are in the process right now of actually gathering scanned vaccine cards, but I knew you would want data tonight, so we did it this way, so we have that to work with while we gather the rest and get that in our hands and out quickly over the month of September. So just in a quick check with the staff, over the last two days, voluntary survey, 424 of them responded. Out of the 424, they are all vaccinated, but eight. So that's, I think, an outstanding starting place. This is the breakdown of Alcott. I'm going to go to the percentages, I think it's a little easier to see. That's who we answered. So we haven't broken out who's pub, who's vaccinated by COVID yet, so I'll just show you the aggregate. Sorry, I thought it was broken out there. Survey numbers, I'm going to raise a little bit. This is some respondents, that's probably the easiest way we'll get it and know that you're among all of those who are not fully vaccinated. So our percentages are very, very high for staff, and I know we're going to talk about the policy. Jared and I continue to work with the remaining union leaders to work through collaborative agreements. They are very close, a little bit left to do this week. And then I think our intent in talking about a policy is we need an umbrella for the non-union people. There's no other way, you need some process in order to ask them to also be vaccinated. So the policy you're going to look at it for a stream of tonight with an umbrella that would allow for that. But overall, we're in excellent shape. And I'll tighten these numbers up, those people who actually submitted, and considering the subjects. 426 is what percentage of the entire staff? That is, usually I use a number of 700, so we'll want to tighten up and obviously as we, as they submit, they'll get closer. People are into the whole body. Right, exactly. And then Um, and then students, and this is harder data. Grades seven and eight, we have seventy-one, seventy-five percent of the kids are vaccinated. And that would go up a little if we included the ones with one dose, which is not fair, not in that percentage. Um, and then grades nine through twelve, we're at eighty or better across all of those. I told Sarah earlier, Mr. Maschula let the kids know if we had the vaccine on record, they would not be quarantined and, um, whoosh, and they may all got their, and so did it came. Uh, so we're in excellent shape there as well. And again, that's where things are coming in. Um, but we're really pleased and.
Those are cards actually uploaded.
Yes, yes. Those are either cards uploaded, the middle school data is actually off the state portal because there is a repository. And any vaccine provider has to submit it. So we're getting it from both directions and cross-checking. All, all a work in progress, but some numbers are real, it's through the state portal or through actual cards that we have.
Because I believe there's some number floating that says ninety-five percent.
So that's off the DPH, you know, aggregate numbers. So it could be we can get to that as we keep getting cards in. Um, certainly that is what the DPH is reporting. So this should only go up.
Thank you. You're welcome. And, and as part of our, our COVID update, um, we decided as a group that we would check on our policies, on, on our protocols, um, every two weeks and, um, and specifically today to talk a little bit about the mask policy. Um, and, and really explore our, you know, what, what mitigation options are there to us and, and what we hope to, to get out of them, right? We got, we've been public experts and we're in the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics are currently recommending use of masks. Call students K through twelve and then in partnership with the local authorities, with the administration. We created or renewed our mask policy for the year. Um, and then shortly thereafter, Dessie also issued the universal mask mandate. But they made it effective immediately and through what they say, I believe stockholder refers while they look at, quote, possible off-ramps for schools. Um, and I think it's worth just kind of touching them to, to talk as a group about what possible off-ramps there are to understand our mitigations that we have. We have distance, ventilation with masks, vaccination, screening, contact tracing. Um, and the metrics that we have are our vaccination rates, our test positivity and our, and our case counts. Um, and so we should start thinking about what information do we need to add to determine um, if the schools can make masks optional? And, and what does it mean to remove one of these mitigations? Um, I think that's really a critical thing that, that we need to talk about. Um, and, you know, do we want the winners or followers, um, in which? Um, and I think, and Alexa, you, you had some good thoughts about.
Yeah, it's nice. So when we talked today and in light of like how we have been engaging with the public, either as individuals on the street or in these forums. One of the things that I keep coming back to, especially from the subset of population that is not thrilled about mask mandates, I, I, I keep going back to this idea about something that maybe would be helpful to communicate, which is I don't think any one of us fashions ourself as a public health expert, nor are we fashioning ourselves creators of public health policy. And so I think when we look at these policies, I just think it's important for the public to know we can look at our policies with like one thing in mind, which is like, our policies need to create conditions that allow our stu-, our teachers to like effectively and efficiently educate our students. That's it. Like, that's the only thing our policies are doing. We are not, you know, trying to, these are not policies that are gonna keep kids out of hospital. This is about keeping conditions appropriate so that teachers can teach and students can learn. And I think obviously the single most important of those conditions is that students are in the building and teachers are in the building. So like, all we're trying to achieve through our policies are to create conditions that allow as many teachers as possible and as many students as possible to be in those buildings. We are not trying to achieve anything else. Um, and I think what we need to do, like you said, there'd be about five or six mitigations that are available to us. And obviously vaccinations are the best, but I think the elephant in the room is that we've got like a big subset of kids that through no fault of their own can't get vaccinated. They live in mixed households. We have kids that are vaccinated and I think until we get to a place where those five to eleven-year-old covert kids can have access to a vaccine, we need to have as many of these like layers as possible. I always said, look at that like Swiss cheese graphic. Where like the more layers you add on, the harder it is for that virus to get through. And sure, when we have conditions on the ground where the entirety of our, the populations that we serve, five to, you know, grade five to, sorry, grade K to twelve, that is, I think, a really good time to talk about off-ramping or, you know. But I think it's gonna be a tricky conversation before that. And again, I just think the big piece that people need to understand is we just want kids and teachers and schools on the playing fields, in the auditoriums, wherever they are, doing whatever they love. And that's, that's it. And I think that our policies just need to reflect that and not all. And I think they do, much, if they should. So, I don't know, it's a nuance, but I think it's an important one.
So I just wanna be sure that Alexa's speaking herself.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a little bit different take. I do think it is our responsibility as a school to have policies to keep our kids safe. And I don't just see it as keeping a protected environment, uh, schools. But I think it is our imperative that we execute policies that are recommended to pretend to keep our community safe. And we are doing, wearing masks to keep our most vulnerable, though maybe not the population that gets the sickest from getting sick. And those are not just our students in our class, but student, you know, children of our staff, um, siblings of our students. And I do think, no, I do want very much wanna keep everybody at school and that's of course a big part of the mask mandate. But I do think, for me, it's important to keep everybody safe and healthy. I think we've seen a lot of evidence that the Delta is vicious. And I've heard a statistic today that up to three hundred kids are going to the hospital every day. So this is not last year's COVID. Um, so I think we have to be very careful and move carefully and slowly because this Delta is just so much more contagious, much more, I think deadly version of COVID and I, I do think it's very important to try to do everything, you know, to keep everybody in our communities, communities, safe. So.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's worth noting that last Ju-, in June, when, when we were confident that school would be open with fewer precautions and brace, right? And that, that, you know, we weren't in the same place then. And I know there are people who are frustrated that they feel the goalpost keep moving or that we're changing. But the fact is that Delta is a new playing field. It's, it, 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 it's, it's a new game, but it's, it's not, uh, we don't have, we don't have the same intervention that we had before. We have a new variant. Um, that is, whatever it is, eighty to ninety percent of cases that right now. And it is highly more infectious, it is highly more contagious, um, and does seem to be impacting younger people more. And I don't know if it's that they're more exposed to it because of openings and fewer precautions across the board. Or I mean, that's something that we're not here to, to tease out, right? Um, and, and I know there are questions about, about the severity of the disease and if it's only so few kids that are, that really get sick from it, like should that be a consideration that we have? But the fact is that the public guidance is that if you are positive, you have to quarantine at home. And so to Alexa's point, right?
Mm-hmm.
That we're, we have to follow that, but so that's, so this, so and a way to keep as many people in the building as possible and to mitigate the transmission of the disease is through wearing a mask, right?
We're achieving all of those levels, right?
So, so I don't think, I don't think, I personally don't think we need to discuss on, you know, is this more dangerous, less dangerous or not? Like that, right? We know what the public health recommendations are, what the state's guidelines are. Um, and we know that at a minimum, we have to adhere to those, right?
For now.
Yep, for now.
Yep.
I just, I, I just wanted to add, um, the, myself, I represent both sides, right? And we have, um, all, all sorts, all part, the parents on both sides. And we have.
Both sides, I'm gonna put all these perspectives.
With, um, with children that are unvaccinated or children that are vaccinated. Now, we have to make sure till, uh, parents that cannot make the decision about the child's health because the child is too young, we have to make sure that we do protect those children just as much. And we allow these parents to make health decisions for, for, for their own children just as much as the parents that don't feel that vaccination is important in their child's life. So till that, the situation changes for, for that, uh, age group, it, it is necessary to take all of the precautions that, that are possible in our heads. All of the tools that we have deployed last year and we're successful. We're one of the few districts that brought students to learn in person. Um, deploy all of those tools till we learn more.
Mm-hmm.
And they provided us with free tools. They, they provided us with COVID testing. Uh, in addition to, to the tool that we have, we are not mandating our high school students to, to get, to get pool tests, to take the pool tests right now, just athletes. So until we have a good understanding what is happening in our student population, we need to keep the masks on.
And to your point about, I mean, one is that Delta is new, that a lot of information, we're going to get a lot more information from the, the, the screening that we do with the athletes, right? And we'll have a much better sense of really what's happening in our community. Um, and that may inform us in, in, and I don't know. But I, I wonder also if it's worth considering, um, protocols, are there other groups, other?
Mask.
Yeah, other, um, student activities that we think, um, it's also worth having that same mandatory testing for.
Yeah, the one that comes to mind, um, are the folks the most joyous about getting back to some normalcy is the music folks who have been singing and obviously the wind instruments. They're gonna be inside, they're excited about that. They are gonna be masked, um, but they are also going to be projecting. So that, that's my first instinct would be that would be the other group. The athletes were because of the close contact and such, this is another pretty reasonable way to approach a little higher risk. So let's get some testing going and just know if, know that we're doing it safely versus hoping we're doing it safely.
But we strongly encourage people to participate. We're not discouraging anybody.
No, yes, in fact, we're urging.
Yes.
Urging was the word I used, so.
The higher, the higher participation of this.
For athletes, it's mandatory.
The athletes have been mandatory.
We could consider making it mandatory for like those respiratory projective.
Yeah, I would probably, um, have the entire course of dance go and not select certain instruments because they're all within the same vicinity of the.
Right, 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 exactly.
Of that environment.
And that'd be middle school and high school.
I would say middle school and high school. The elementary music folks are not singing, we're playing those instruments because they see four hundred kids during the week and didn't wanna go there. So it's a middle, high school decision.
And theater is all masks, right? It's a straight play in the hall.
It's a straight play in the hall, in fact.
But theater spends a significant amount of time together as a group, you know, so they can be together for three months. As a sport would also be together for three months, so that might be considered.
It feels more egalitarian to me, like to expand that array of people protesting and it certainly would be a benefit.
I think, I think most of them would be willing because they're so excited to get back to some music here. It's been a long, long road for them. I think for me, and I don't think it should go without saying, the biggest, biggest precaution we took all of last year was the distancing. And we are now relaxing that down to three feet and even being a little generous with it where, where it makes sense to be so they can teach a little bit differently than in the roads. Uh, I don't think we wanna lose track of the fact that that's mitigation, we are relaxing some. And while we're looking at all these other options, it's a variable for sure. So, you know, we don't wanna go back to six feet. That's incredibly prohibited and can't get all the kids back to snow that way. We're going to three, we're trying it a little more flexibly so they get a few more options, not all day, but for some activities. I mean, I feel like I wanna see what Delta does in that environment as well because we don't have any experience there with Delta and the distance changing and hallways not being one way. And all that good stuff is making it feel like school. Um, so I just don't wanna lose track of that change. Bus is full with kids, you know, on and on.
Yeah.
The success our doctor, Hunter, would be to keep everyone, uh, in school through the full uninterrupted year, correct?
Certainly, that's a huge goal, right, is to succeed there. And I think Cynthia's point that as we succeed there and we're also keeping people safe, so that two happen simultaneously. We were, um, generally very, very successful with that last year, just with our kind of slow deliberate.
Yep.
Approach and, and yet not static. I think we wanna be sure we're stressing that. Nobody wants to stay static.
No.
In July, these were gone, folks, right? This building didn't have, you know, we didn't have the signs up. We did let it go back the day the kids were gone. The rates were so low, the teachers were in the schools without masks for the last two days. And we were celebrating thinking that was it. But anyway, sure, we are not gonna stay static.
And I guess, um, from my perspective, I do think it is critical to have all the data in front of us and be transparent with parents and the teachers and the students, like here's where we're at today.
Yeah.
And just to keep revisiting that in terms of vaccinations, in terms of COVID cases. And if people can see it right in front of them, I think it's, it's easier to say, okay, I understand why we're wearing the mask.
Right.
Um, but I think that, it just to be as transparent as we possibly can.
Yeah, so, so the dashboard that went up weekly, I think we do wanna add the vaccine status. I think that's worth noting there. Um, I definitely wanna note the breaks in cases on the vaccinations because that's much of what the health officials have been tracking this summer and then we'll have our own than any other data points. It captures already the pool testing and whether or not we've had cases come out with that, so.
And just for clarity, do you, of the unvaccinated staff, do you know which buildings they're in?
I do.
Or do you not know, you do, but not the general population of them?
And with all this data, Doctor Hunter, will you be, it seems like we, you will be able to make decisions that are really based, uh, local decisions that are really based in our own particular situation versus comparing us to other places that might not, uh, behave or look the same, is that?
Yeah, exactly. Because all these variables are now gonna be facts and we wanna make that be what's informing all the decisions that we're making, for sure. One thing I think is worth noting, Dessie's been very clear, you have to have at least eighty percent vaccinated in schools in order to even consider changing the mask. I know we're right about there and that won't be an issue, but it's worth noting, they have set one very strong benchmark. And they have already said, we were on the, with the commissioner earlier, anyone unvaccinated will have to stay masked, which I think was our expectation, but it is coming.
Who's gonna enforce that? That's just.
Well, that's a, that is a trick, so.
That's the problem.
It's anything.
We'll have to hash that out tonight. We will have, I think we just have to move forward based on the data, the scientific recommendations and get this sort of recall, you know? Two weeks from now, I think we'll, yes, have very different information. We'll certainly have a conversation, wholehearted conversation about where we are in two weeks. We'll have a gun to the testing, um, we'll have new vaccination rates and we'll have a lot of other data from around us.
I'm trying my part to do.
Uh, I can be very brief. Uh, my own opinion, we're halfway through a global pandemic and we're doing all right. Uh, layered approaches to your point in schools have worked magnificently. Alexa, I think you said our primary goal, but Cynthia, to your point, uh, I think the schools, notably Concord and Valhalla, contributed to the larger community public health goals, as they should have. Um, so back to where we started, uh, what can we relax and when? I'm happy to have that conversation, but not with any kind of time certain because I am completely in favor of the precautionary measures that we have taken. Uh, difficult though they may be, uh, I think we've protected kids from the psychic harm of masks and, uh, other, other things that, uh, they've had to be cautious about, uh, because it has risen to challenge because our adults have risen to challenge. Happy to see that we continue that. Um, we're, we're following the science, I think, very appropriately and, uh, nothing in our messaging from our public health experts locally has given us any, we have bonds at all so far. I had in my idle moments wondered, should we have a first read of any policies so we're in our back pocket if we ever have to move fast? And my answer is no, I don't think so. I think, uh, our superintendent has the necessary authority to move fast, even if this committee can't.
Hi, I'm to, um, congratulate everyone, um, for, for a successful start and accommodating the different, uh, needs and following closely, uh, the development of, of, uh, of the situation. And, um, yes, it is difficult. We all have to make difficult choices and, um, I think we're all doing our best to ensure that our children are getting their education and, uh, all the staff are, are, are safe. So, um, yeah, thank you.
Great, so as a follow-up to that, um, let's look at policy we've seen as of today. This is a first reading.
I'm sure it's okay with.
Then I didn't hear she said. So I don't like talking to them.
Yeah. Thank you, Ed.
Everyone had a chance to read this before?
I'm pulling it up now. Can you, uh, start, uh, with sourcing on this?
Sure, so, and this is a, um, locally developed policy. Uh, much of it's come from discussions with, uh, the union leadership as we've worked through MIA agreements with them. Uh, they certainly, uh, worked and looked at the MTA document. I did consult with, uh, district legal counsel. Um, it's evolved from those numbers of sources. So just for point of clarity, we didn't have a vote on vote for tonight because I think you've got time.
Okay.
While we're wrapping up other things.
Okay.
So we're happy to just talk tonight and, you know, I didn't, I didn't know there could be any.
A gentleman.
No, that's okay, I just thought it.
So it's okay too, because our next meeting is fourteenth.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, I mean, I have to like move the date a little, we push it out, so I think we're heading in the right direction.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so you got any questions, just, does anyone have questions about this or?
Yeah, I, I can just give you a couple of high level points of what's here. Uh, one is the date was selected because it's intended to allow someone who hasn't had any vaccinations to get both shots and still have a two-week waiting period. So that's why it's October 17th and not sooner.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it does think forward and provide a provision for a booster shot, expecting those will likely come. Um, and I just, I think we want to be sure we're noting medical and religious exemptions are here. They legally have to be.
Mm-hmm.
Um, processes for either of those require documentation submitted to me. I'm the one that can correct the exception. Um, obviously a medical one might consult with one of the lead nurses, maybe Lisa Cosby, um, and the health officials. But otherwise, uh, there is no, um, provision not to be vaccinated. The middle ground step, like Governor Baker's policy says, you're either in those two categories, you're exempt or you're vaccinated, or you don't have a job here.
Yes.
We were looking for a little bit of breathing space just because all this is new and kind of happening quickly, that if someone lands in that position, they would go on an unpaid leave for the year and that would give us a chance to catch our breath, um, and figure out what our next plan is going to be. So I just wanted to note that that's meant to soften that status if we somehow land there, um, rather than the cart launch definitive, you know, I'm very, I'm a fool here. Obviously, we'd be back in that conversation, um, as we revise policy and such down the road. It would get sus. Thank you.
I, I had a question in terms of, uh, uh, Dr., thank you, Dr. Hunter, you have, uh, probably answered most of my questions. I just had a question regarding that time, October 17th, uh, because there is a month, um, between the first and the second dose.
Yes.
So when we vote on this.
Right, you may want to modify the date.
Do we give, yes, so do we have, give people enough time to?
Right.
Take time to get the vaccination.
Right, so this, when, when this was first looked at, it was still obvious.
Probably, yes.
So we knew we were building in at least six weeks, if not longer. As time goes on, you're probably going to want to adjust that, um.
But this information is being clearly socialized with our staff. This is.
Oh, yes.
Just because we don't vote on it tonight.
No, very clearly socialized with that, in that.
And the teachers have this, oh, everybody, this is only non-union personnel.
This is only non-union, it already has been communicated that you were having this discussion?
Yeah.
Um.
I think, well, you could just, you know, I have a personal, like, hold to the date. Um, because, yeah, people expected us to drop the hammer and say, you know, you can't commit to building unless you're vaccinated. And I, I think we're trying to find a, a, we'll try to build around to have people get that. I heard people just say I didn't get it, I just didn't get it. Um, so we're letting them get to it now.
Yep, and I can continue to bring that message back. If you have this conversation, there's going to be a vote, the date will change, so let's.
Yeah.
And, and respond appropriately, this is when you're going to vote it through. Very well socializing, and, and a survey went out asking them, so I think we are very much socializing where you're going here.
Yeah. Thank you. There are no further comments, questions on this policy? Then this is on to old business, the DEI subcommittee. Um, and I just want to give a little bit of background from last, our last meeting. Uh, we talked a little bit about the DEI subcommittee. Um, Tracy and I were, were appointed as the two of the first three subcommittee members. Um, and we talked a little bit about how our subcommittee will at the beginning comprise only the three, three school committee members. Um, but the meetings will take place in public on Zoom, uh, to allow access to a wide range of voices, um, so that we can hear from, inviting in and really engage with, um, everybody who, who wants to have a voice heard and a seat at the table, um, in this important work. Um, and so on that line, um, Erin, can I get, oh, I have to, Erin. Um, I did attend the League of Women Voters meeting about the town, the Concord Select Board's, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion commission. Um, and I think it's very worth noting how different we are from, from that endeavor. And in that we are really looking at how can we in our, in our school committee role support the DEI work within the districts?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and the town has its own charter that I have up here. Um, and the League of Women Voters just asked that we can, uh, sort of share this with the broader community so, so that everyone knows that, that, that the Concord Select Board is looking for people to, um, come forward and, um, and offer themselves up to be a part of the, um, of the town's DEI commission.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so here is the, the charter and, um.
And you could go fill out there's Concord has an electronic green card, which is not too difficult to find. And I'm sure if you can find it, just, you know, the select board, um, they will then, uh, put you to the right place. They're looking to move in this as quickly as possible and they're looking for as broad a pool of community members as that they can find, so.
Great. So that's what I wanted to share there. Um, and so we have two things. We, we have so one more seat to fill on the, um, on the subcommittee. Um, and then I really, uh, welcome, want to extend a welcome to Mr. Nenechi. Uh, thank you for joining us tonight and thank you so much for all of the work that you've done over the summer. It's been phenomenal to read about, um, your lens for the year, for, for your, you know, you've got a very full agenda ahead of you. And I just want to say that, um, from, from the school committee perspective and from the subcommittee perspective, please, in whatever way that we can, we can help advance your goals, um, we're really looking forward to, to working with you on this. Uh, Tracy, do you have anything?
Um, no, I'm just, I'm really excited to be a part of this team with Andrew and, you know, welcome you to your position, which is fantastic. And I think it's important that we all understand kind of the direction that you're looking to move in and be a part of the committee with us and some of your goals. So it'll be great to have those conversations.
Um, yeah, and if you can, you know, maybe, uh, the first meeting, you may, you should come and, and talk us a little bit. You have, you have a survey that's going out and I think it's really important for the community to understand, um, why the survey is so important to you. Um, and we really welcome hearing, uh, hearing you, hearing, hearing you, you, you communicate with the community. So about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I want people to get excited about this work because I know you're very excited, we're very excited. And I want that to be contagious.
Yeah.
Um, to the, the broader community, so.
Yeah. So I think with that, we'll, uh, move to finding our, well, I don't know, Andrew, do you have anything that you want to say?
He has lots to say.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm acting personal. I agree, I've talked to the staff, but I'm starting with, I've got lots to say. But do you have anything briefs to share?
Well, thank you for the invite, uh, to this evening's school committee meeting. Um, I think the year is off to a great start. Um, I'm definitely, um, starting to have some conversations, um, already with some of our school leaders and, uh, some of our students and some of the clubs. And, you know, I sent out my welcome letter, um, uh, yesterday and I've already received, uh, quite, quite the feedback, uh, from some parents in town. And, and of course, uh, folks are utilizing my DEI feedback form, uh, which is great um, because it is, it is also, uh, a space that folks can again send me their input, their concerns, um, you know, areas of improvement that, that they, that they are hoping for, um, within this work. And so, um, I've been reading a lot of, a lot of the feedback so far and, and, you know, we've, we've got, we've got a lot of work to do, um, uh, within this work. But again, very excited, um, uh, very engaged, uh, with, with folks in our school community. And I think, um, as the year goes on, I think it's, it will only grow, uh, from there. But I do welcome the opportunity to, to come back, uh, to you all and, and, and have a conversation around some of my goals, uh, some of the, the, the planning that, that I have, um, in the coming weeks in terms of, again, gathering those feedback, uh, from folks in the community, um, to better inform, um, sort of a development of our strategic plan, uh, going into the future. So appreciate, appreciate the invite this evening.
Yep, and, um, so, well, Frank, who wasn't here at our last meeting, the reason we have two members chosen and not a third is that we were unfortunately not all in attendance last time Fatima, we, we missed you. Um, and we thought that it was important that to, to finish out our subcommittee that we did have, um, all school committee members present, um, to, to make sure that everyone had input into this, uh, conversation.
Thank you, I appreciate, um, the accommodations while I, uh, I was away. As you all know, um, this is important to me and to everyone, um, on, on the committee and in our community. So I, I appreciate that and thank you for continuing the conversation today.
So we need to. Ask for, ask, ask for a room.
This is a very.
Yes.
Please. I simply want to share with you my, my perception of this subcommittee just to see if we're still on the same page, um, because I think we've adapted it as we've watched district, internal district efforts through Dr. Hunter and Mr. Nenechi. Uh, Kristen, you've been there all the way, okay, so not to be overlooked. Uh, and then we have seen, uh, the select board move forward. So my understanding, I just put it out there, my colleagues' test is that at the present time, our subcommittee, the primary focus is to see that this school committee is as effective as it can be in this space. So it's not a community-facing group per se, and some of them are. So at the present time, a school committee-facing group to see that seven of us are highly engaged, highly informed, highly capable of engaging in the work that a school committee can do around this. It is not the same as the work that Dr. Hunter and Christian can do. Is that, does that resonate with you, folks?
Yes, it's a targeted effort that we could not accomplish as a full committee. I mean, I think we felt that a subcommittee would give the time, attention, or a subgroup of the school committee, to do this work and inform the full school committee as to the work we're doing. Is that, that, am I saying that actually the right way?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, there might be a presumption, uh, that because our colleague Fatima wasn't present at the earlier meeting, that we're holding this space for her. I, I don't hold that opinion. Um, rather, I would say this committee makes that decision and welcomes Fatima and anybody other than Sarah and Tracy were on it to, uh, to voice an interest and a commitment to doing this work.
Correct.
It's going to take some time, it's going to take, uh, a certain skill set. Uh, hopefully whoever joins it is a compliment to you and make the, uh, the subcommittee even stronger. So I think there are pause and ask. I don't, I don't best fulfill the mission with that third seat and hear from Fatima, certainly, uh, you because, uh, you didn't, uh, uh, join us on the earlier conversation. So I hope we have a couple of minutes chairs to engage in that tonight.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Court, I just want to make sure I, I understand correctly. Were you asking me the question?
Uh, do you want to serve on the committee and if so, why? What, what can you bring to it? And I think anybody who wants to, uh, address that same question, I would hope they get an invitation. So I hope I'm not being too forward to asking.
Sure, um, yes, I, I, and I'm, my, my interest in DEI work, uh, has been, uh, uh, very vocal and clear, uh, since really, uh, since, you know, before DEI was an acronym and everyone who knows me has, you know, knows that I've been, uh, working on, 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 on diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. Uh, from just my, my personal perspective and wanted to contribute, uh, in any way that I could as, as a citizen, as a parent. Um, what I can, yes, I, I am still interested, um, in, in contributing in the capacity of a member of the subcommittee, um, on DEI. Um, and I think what I can bring, uh, to the, uh, subcommittee is, um, the perspective, everyone has an important perspective. We are all different, um, in our ways. And, um, uh, I think that I can, uh, bring a perspective that, um, that is not prevalent in, in, in our community or in our school commu- committee. Um, I, I value our diversity as a committee and as a school, school community. And, um, I think that, um, I can, I, I, I cannot say that I represent any minorities. I, I, um, I don't think of myself, um, as such. Uh, I, I like to use my own experiences in, in, in this community, uh, in our school community to, to inform the. in our school community to, to inform the, the, the change that I would like to suggest, that I would like for us to consider and explain and hopefully provide the reasoning behind the changes that I would like to see, that I would like to propose and for us to consider. I can talk about areas that I, I worked on again, before I came on the school committee is to point to blind spots. I mean, we used this phrase a lot last year, and I like going back to it. And that is my, that is the angle that I'm, I come at this from, really. I've always looked at this as whenever there are equity issues or diversity issues, it, I've always believed strongly that it stems from not knowing and not, not anything else. So for me, it's always a blind spot. And my role is to point to that blind spot and have a conversation. And I'm looking also for my own personal growth, my, you know, learning from other perspectives and reconsidering my, my, my perspective. So again, some groups that I have advocated for voluntarily, again, are the, the low-income families in, in our community, the religious minorities, special education families. Because I have experienced those, those circumstances. I, I live those, those circumstances. And I can speak from my own personal experience. And I have access to voices that we may not necessarily hear for a number of reasons. So I, I, I would like to bring that to you because I see the interest. I see that we want to be comprehensive. We want to hear from everyone. We want to cover as much ground as, as we possibly can. So that is how I see my role.
So the way through the chairs, say, Fatima, thank you. I will choose not to vie for a position on this committee as much as I am dedicated to the goals of the committee. Thank you very much for sharing those perspectives.
I'm tapped out. All right, so.
I, I just wanted to ask.
Yes, please.
I have keen interest in the work that was started a long time ago. And I have seen the fruits of that work through the experience of my own kids that have been going through Concord High School. So I really appreciate the scope and the need for this work and the understanding of the benefit that DEI work brings to our own students. Because it is important to know that diversity helps our students when they go off to the, to the big world, they go off to college. And it takes, it impacts their life experience. And my, my parents are view positively. I, I feel that Fatima will serve very well in that position. I, I would just like to know how, as a school committee member, I can also add to, to, to that process with questions if, if there is a good formal way. And I think we will have an opportunity to talk deeper about our roles and our goals during our workshop, correct?
That's, that's right. So, so once we figure out who's on the committee, then we can all meet and, and start to really figure out our, our protocols. And they may, they may evolve and how we operate may evolve. I mean, I think that as to Corey's point, like, we're not operations, right? And we are figuring out how can we strengthen our, our policies, our budget practices, the things that we have in our purview. How, how can we make sure that those are aligning and supporting with Mr. Nemeche's work, with, with Kristin's work, and with the work of our students and our faculty and, and so. And really, how can we be a stronger school committee in, in this journey?
Yes.
And so we'll, we'll figure out a way for taking questions or processing feedback or how we supersize. Because I know that everybody, I don't, I mean, just because not everybody's going to be on the subcommittee does not mean that this isn't work, that everybody wants to be involved there.
Correct, yes.
And that's, and we want to make sure that everybody does. We just think that having a subcommittee will best channel and be a more effective way of, of using our resources.
Stronger and more efficient.
Yes, yes, exactly. Okay. Thank you. So I think we have a nomination on the table.
Well, like, we need somebody to make the nomination motion to nominate.
So are we at action items?
Oh, no. I always do that. No.
No, no, we are.
So I think we set the table for that.
Yes, we'll move on.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll come back to that, okay. Sure.
Exactly. I'll be brief. So in your, in your back in length is the updated memo. Not much has really changed since I last reported on June 10th, which is good news. All of our projections held. One of the things, while we cover to close out, I, I sort of want to explain that we really don't close out until we get audited. We don't get audited until we have our preliminary audit scheduled for next month. But then it takes months for the final audit to come in. So those numbers do change up until potentially February. So a couple things. I'm going to be starting at the high school list, the more complicated budget. Starting with the good news, we are projecting to have an E and D of 5%. At this time, I'm not 100% projecting any money left over to the general fund. And if we have any money left over, you want it to be, you know, significant. And the reason for that is because our E and D is not yet certified after, after the D, the Department of, the DOR does all of the tax rates. So if we, if, at the region, if we give money back to the communities, that changes their tax rates. So at this time, I'm, I'm not projecting really anything left over. That could change. We're still in the, we're still closing out some, some purchase orders, et cetera. But we have to get this all done before any year report is due. And that's due at the end of next month in the United States. It's a good two to three weeks. So I should have some, I don't think much will change, but we'll have some updated numbers by the, by the 14th. So the general fund, if we were able to prepay tuition for the final amount, it's, it's still to be determined because we are really at the mercy of the schools to get invoices for the first three months. And even though we started in June, we still have about four or five left. Though, we do know those amounts, so those are in my projections. Our bus fee, we have to put a bus fee together. All bits are due on September 20th. We gave about a month for those bills to come in. We expect that to come in around $350,000, as well as the NAC books that will purchase with your approval. We have a money move to the stabilization account. So the, the general fund is in, is in great shape. And nothing changed since really last report. Our revolving accounts, again, nothing changed with those. We do anticipate to have the same, around the same beginning in any balances in the food service account as well as the budget account. And we will have the full circuit breaker amount for the high school, which is projected to be about $872,500. So that is good. So that's where we, we are with the high school revolving accounts. And then the S R grants, nothing has changed. We were able to spend the year that night. And then we're open, we were able to roll over the emergency relief one, two, and three. In that, I did update the grant deadlines, just so you all know, when that money has to waste. So any questions on the page?
Remind me about circuit breaker. That's a front load for fiscal '22 based on fiscal '20 numbers.
Based on FY, so it's based on FY '21. So, yes, so what we got in FY '21 was $872,000. By law, we are able to carry over that amount. And we can't carry over, so next year, if for some reason, if FY '22, we are $1 million, we have to at least expend $872,000. And we can, we can carry over the money.
Forgive me, back, back up for me. We received $872 in fiscal '22.
Fiscal '21. Yep.
Okay, so typo here.
In FY '20.
Last paragraph. Just want to understand, I'm trying to challenge it.
We received $872 in circuit breaker monies in FY '22. And we carried over $1 million.
Yeah, it is a typo. Yeah, it should be minus in FY '21.
Thank you. Good, thank you, okay, I got it.
So I have some question. And I would, I don't want to have a in-depth discussion about the athletics state. As a private citizen, a couple of years ago, I objected to the race, the key getting raised. But it was made clear to me that there was very deep concern that it wasn't, we saw it without raising those fees. And now we have quite a big excess. And I don't think the athletic revolving fund is intended to fund capital projects. So I think we as a committee need to have discussion as to whether it's appropriate to have this large excess of the fund and how, you know, what budget is and how we should look at carrying this going forward. What's the appropriate thing? That's just my opinion, and I don't want to, it's not about, it's not in agenda item. I don't want to get into it, but just food for thought. And I just want to keep it high. I can certainly agree, I guess, to duck down a little bit.
No, that's great. I have a quick question. When it comes to the food service, our students at the high school, they, they are getting free lunch, right? So that deficit comes from the fact that we're, they're, they're not paying forwards.
They're not paying participations down. One of the things at the high school is that snack bar, the revenue goes down from that the next, next two years.
So we've talked with Bryce, Jared, primarily. We decided to open school a certain way, and he's going to ramp up and it's going to get settled and acclimated. So hopefully, we're going to keep getting closer and closer towards the remarkably great things he was doing. Not that what he's doing now is it, but it's not quite the same. And continue to really try to bring back some of what we have.
And you were encouraging students to eat outside, so some of the traffic is not going through the lunchroom right now as well. So that's really what it had done.
It's the time of the year. Couple of, it's just, you know, in rainy day in November, it's not going to be so much fun. Go down, if I'm saying, so keep that.
It could be rainy day in September later.
But, so yeah, rainy day. This is all COVID impact and trying to be sure you're staffed, but not overstaffed. But like when we brought all those kids back in April, thank goodness we had enough staff to do that. And lots of, lots of variables, for sure.
Thank you, Jared. And then just to, if any more questions on the page? And then for Concord, much less complicated, as you know, because we are at the five hundredth year of the town. We are expected to, to end at zero. And then we will have approximately about $255,000 in the food service balance to come forward for next year, which is what the beginning balance was. And then we are projecting right now to carry over $649,694 in circuit breaker. So that's awesome, that's awesome news. And we are still waiting for some prepayment invoices. And those are all factored into my numbers. Purituation, pituitary.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
So school committee goals. This is just going to be a very quick check-in. As we have now set our workshop date. Just wanted to briefly share where we stood on the goals.
Do you want to say the date again?
Yeah, it's just the 16th, 16th from three of five P M's. Got it.
And we'll be, everybody's committed to being in person? I just want to be sure.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
By the way, you're good in person on the 16th?
I'll be here.
If I must, yes, I would prefer to stay remote. But if I, if it's best for the training, the, the training, yes, I will be in person.
And just as a reminder, what we talked about doing is less of a train. Last year, we did, we did training with the professor. Now we're all early experiments. It's, we, we know the protocols, we know the practices. Tracy, have you done charting the course? No, not yet, you, you will, but no, anyway, of course, so. And so we really wanted to take a deep dive into our goals. Through the lens of how can we be effective, how can we be effective school committee? Because I think that's sort of our overarching goal is to be just a stronger body together, right? And so we carried over some of our goals, modified them a little. And even this is all just a framework for conversations. We will, during our workshop, where we get into the weeds about what are our expectations to, to learn? What's the, what's the relevant information for us? How can we best access information? And how can we best communicate information and expectations? And, and so, so we will be looking at COVID and giving the takeaways from, from COVID and, you know, like, what we just in protocols and practices, our budget, our policies, our superintendent support and evaluation, our community engagement. And then I think much deeper dives to the conversation we're having earlier into our cultural competency and to our special education goals. So I just wanted to put that out there, but, but this is very.
Sounds easy.
Sorry.
And we will be doing a little reflection, correct?
I, okay, so we're doing a reflection on this past year. It was just sort of through the lens of as a school committee member, as a member of the community.
Do you, you sent out a document that was an outline of ways we could, you know, we could reflect. Do you, would it be helpful to have those beforehand so that if they could be shared and synthesized, absorbed, that the conversation getting more constructive? Or should we instead prepare, bring them with us on the day of? Do you have thoughts on that?
I think more efficient to synthesize it, whether we can do this for evaluation and give people a chance to communicate about it.
I was thinking about, you know, organizing, so it would be, would be a thought.
Correct, all of that in intermediate, which is we all produce beforehand, but no effort to synthesize by anybody, many, many, until we're all in together and then the group does the synthesizing. Because then it's the pushing.
I just said, like, absorb, like, if I saw other people's stuff, other people's ideas, I could absorb. Would it, and I admit, I don't know the answer, genuinely, yes. Would it be beneficial to have a little bit of time to absorb and marinate on it? Yes. The, you know. And if so, if we're going to submit them in advance, what would my job like be?
Somebody at the chairs receive them, or at a chair receive it. And when they're all collected, then disseminate them as one group. So I don't influence you, you don't influence me. And everybody has a clean version of their opinions. And then collectively, we ask, like, how do we sift and sort this? I think it would be.
And I don't, I don't know how much time we actually need to spend actually sifting and sorting it. Because I think, I think that being able to read everybody's thoughts and, and process it on our own, that's, we're going to do an internal sifting and sorting that will inform our conversation through the workshop. So I don't, I think that actually, if ever, yeah, you submit your thoughts and then we can.
Couple days, one more.
And number four, day four, we can and we can share now.
Like it's the same.
It's a Thursday, Monday.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. Because that's on this Monday. So everybody knows where everyone else is. Oh, okay, okay, yeah, we got it. We have, we don't have a meeting next week.
It's Monday the thirteenth, correct?
Monday the thirteenth.
Perfect. Right?
Yeah, I know. Nice.
I wonder if if we can just hold as a separate consideration the idea that uh we are well into our five-year strategic plan and alignment is important.
Yeah.
Uh so just keep that on our radar, we're we're four of a five here. And so that's gonna be coming around very quickly as well, so.
Yeah.
Uh one doesn't necessarily uh direct the other, but they all influence each other, so.
Right.
Just have to be aware, that's coming out as again, pretty.
It's a good thing we had COVID and not five years to teach.
His call on three.
Anyway, yes, thank you.
Alright, okay.
So everybody agrees with the practice or the protocol that we're going to have? Everybody submits to, this is open hub, to one person and then with the little packet will we send it out?
Yeah, yeah.
So instead of everybody, you can separate, you know, sending that right away.
From just Sarah by Fishman.
No, no, no. On the thirteenth.
And uh Cynthia, I'm sorry, uh will we be sending also the questions around what we would like to see from the administration that really touches on the communication, how we communicate with administration?
That's what we we talked about reflections.
Right.
So this is another, you're asking if.
But this is kind, I I I I'm talking about the goals for the school committee, are we also improving portion of that?
Oh, how we communicate with them.
Right.
And we don't have that, I mean, it's something we talked about, um but we didn't put it as a goal. If we we could consider putting.
And the and the reason why we're doing this, Fatima, because I might get together, right? And uh we'd like to have an opportunity to work together in the workshop, so coming prepared and like just speaking some.
I I guess as as a new person, you know, I I'm kind of this brand new, I would like to see us to mark norms for how we're meeting, how we're communicating, maybe that is the work we do together, just to make this committee, you know, as cohesive as we can just moving forward. And I think the way we were talking about is your reflection piece, so we're just responding to that. But then also, if we have ideas, we would just talk about that together during the workshop. And others just making sure that that is, so it's that, yeah, figuring out how we best communicate, figuring out like. And so we should all, we should look at our the the book that Cynthia made last year of.
Maybe, you know.
Yes, yeah, uh of of how we do our practices and um and just think about how we operate. Um and I guess too, you know, moving forward, Zoom Zoom has been wonderful for a lot of things, but I think that it's it's very hard, I've been on the other side of it, and I found this on the other side today, and it, the interface is not always great. So if we're expecting our our kids to be in school, I I, my personal opinion is we should just move to just strictly, not strictly, I should say strictly in person, but unless, you know, traveling or something else is coming up. Because I think it's a challenge to, you know, you can't always hear what's happening. And so especially for this meeting, definitely in person, but you know, maybe we have to think about with the direction we're moving in, just to be forward facing to the community. You know, the expectation is if you're quarantined, you may not get Zoom, you know, you're gonna have to go to the classroom. Maybe we need to start thinking about that also when I'm.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, we'll definitely discuss that.
Okay, okay.
There are protocols, there are half practices, there's a lot of stuff.
We had.
We have laws.
Yeah, there are, and there are policies, correct? But you know, and I think if we go back to what were the pre-COVID policies, maybe we need to start operating like that. And this is all just, you know, food for thought, I just wanted to make sure that included in our workshop.
Right, and then that, you know, we had to operate under the meeting law, which now has been changed until, I think it's April two.
Okay.
So we need to take that into it.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, just to wrap that up, a little off topic, but not totally. It's been eighteen months since you met in this room at night and um March tenth of twenty twenty was the last time. If you want a little, because I watched me tell the committee what's coming in around, wasn't even on the agenda of COVID. But I remember saying to the chair, there's no way to not talk about this, and you could hear me talking about it, closing in on me two days before we closed. Um and I would never, I've been with this a long time as school committees, and I've never thought I'd miss any night meetings. But I sit here and say, what do I do about it? It's so much fun, you know, I'm at home now getting these good long days, and it's just so so much better to be here with you all than um. So thank you, I'm glad we made the shift back and and I don't know if we have the same joy as the kids.
You know, we were excited about it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the goals, onto action, Ida, finally, right? Great, okay. And first, our uh motion to approve staff child enrollments. Here we go, you got that?
Yes, you have two. Two uh high school teachers, three elementary students.
So I'll put a motion on the floor, last lawyer, speak to her if she wishes. Uh I move that the Concord and Concord College School Place, who can prove the following staff request to enroll the children in CPS, CCHS, TV, upcoming twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, tuition be waived. Uh Radka Grine, teacher at CCHS, apologies if I pronounced correctly. Her daughter attend the seventh grade at CMS. And second, Courtney Marano, teacher at CCHS, daughter to attend kindergarten at Willard.
I I think if I'm correct, these are both brand new hires and um one went on a tour on the orientation, came back and celebrated my daughter, and the other one, we hired very late and she asked right of words. So that's just, feels really good that they feel so good about us already that they're bringing their children with them as they become new employees. Yeah. So we'll need a second.
Second. Discussion?
We'll have a chance to see the whole roster of new employees at some uh.
Yes.
Soon, I'm sure, but.
Welcome.
Welcome to all of us.
Yes.
Is regional?
Yes.
It's still the vote, oh, sorry.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Marano, I for both.
Ms. Dodge, I for both.
Mustafi, I for region. Randy, I for both, and Wilson for region. Great, thank you. Um and so now we have the votes to appoint third member to the DEI subcommittee. Um is there other, is there nomination or are there nominations?
I'd like to move that the committee uh appoint Thaddeus Mesdatt to serve on the DEI subcommittee.
Second, second. Session?
Thaddeus, thank you, and uh again, uh thanks to Tracy and Sarah. A reminder that uh, as I understand it, your first charge is to develop your charge and bring it forward to this committee's recommendation.
Or to work, you know. Not necessarily, a point, but.
Or him, it's up to you guys. Okay, well, is there a vote? Anderson, I for both.
Yes. Who's I for both?
Marano, I for both.
Is that I for both?
Mustafi, I for region. Randy, I for both, and Wilson for region. Thank you. Uh and let's see, we we are allowing an additional public comment, if there's any, if any thoughts. Anyone have any comments, raise your hands. I see no hands raised, and so with that, I'll retain the motion to adjourn. That's okay. Okay.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Marano, I for both.
Ms. Dodge, I for both.
Mustafi for region.
Randy, I for both, and Wilson for region.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you, you have a wonderful night.
Yeah, thank you.